Gosh, gosh, common council. Would you please take the roll?
Muggerhour?
Here.
Crowsey?
Pack?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Palmary?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Present six.
Would you all please stand while councilmember Muggerhour does the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance?
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business on the agenda are citizen statements to council. Pam, has anyone registered to speak to us?
No one is registered.
Then we'll move on to the consent agenda, and these are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the agenda for discussion.
No one is registered.
I've moved for approval.
In a second.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Smith, regarding eighteen three fifty-nine on the locker room renovation. Just a question, and that is, if this, when is construction due to start on that, once this is approved?
Within the next, we have a pre-construction meeting, I think, scheduled in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the question is, because we're looking at doing a staffing study and a facility study for the public safety buildings, both police and fire, so what would happen if that construction took place, but then later it was determined that we would be in need of a new facility?
The current condition of the lockers as they are now, the nineteen eighty lockers, we're trying to actually expand capacity for our female officers and as well as expanding capacity for workflow itself. Building a new facility, I don't think would have a significant impact upon this because of the facility itself as it is, we probably aren't going to need expanded space to the extreme that we'd have to build a whole new building.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other councilmember wishing to discuss anything on the consent agenda, so would you please take the roll?
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to a pending ordinance. The first is ordinance eighteen dash three sixty-five, approve zone change from neighborhood mixed-use district in Purin's NMU, close Purin's, the neighborhood mixed-use district with planned development overlay Purin's NMU dash PD, close Purin's, one twenty-nine West Seventeenth Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval of this item. And just before we begin, that is the formal set of the VFW Hall. Pam, is anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I see no one wishing to discuss this ordinance, so would you please take the roll?
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Under new resolutions, we have six resolutions. There's been a request from the developer applicant today to move these items over to the twenty, lay these items over to the July twenty-fourth meeting. Is there a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to lay items eighteen three six six through eighteen three seven one over until twenty-four July.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next resolution is eighteen dash three seventy-two, approved conditional use permit and general development plan for construction of four duplexes and an eight-unit multifamily structure, one twenty-nine West Seventeenth Avenue. Again, Plan Commission recommends approval.
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Member Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a general comment. I know that some of the citizens had come to several of the meetings prior to this coming in front of council for approval. I just think it's a great opportunity to rehab an area of the city that had a fire quite a few years ago, and it's been sitting vacant, and I think it should be an upgrade, and I think it'll improve the whole neighborhood as a whole, and so I'm excited to see the final product when it does come through. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I see no other councilmember wishing to discuss this resolution, so would you please take the roll?
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we have resolution eighteen dash three seven three, set public hearing date to vacate. And I believe we'll be showing a map of all these streets. But it's a portion of Northwestfield Street, all of unnamed street between Rath Lane to Northwestfield Street, portion of North Eagle Street, all of Buttermore Street, all of Showmine Street, all of Water Street, portion of Rainbow Drive, all of public alley between Showmine Street and Rainbow Drive, all of public alley between Buttermore Street and Showman Drive Street, and portion of Graham Street. Pam, did anyone?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Herman.
Thank you. Mr. Burridge, I think you'd be the one that could address to this community development, or maybe Allen. What's the purposes for all the vacating, and what does this do, and are we giving it back to the property owners, or where's it going? Just to kind of clarify.
I think we're just cleaning up some old vacations that were never, it was never vacated from the old plat. I think all those are, we haven't looked at where the lands are going back to at this point. I don't think we've done that analysis. Most of that is on city properties, so we've retained some of that. Some of that on Rainbow Drive might come back.
Public Works has done a little. The first two items there are more about cleaning up the eventual street that'll loop between Keller and Westfield. The remaining ones are the ones shown on that. No, keep it up there, Jake, that's good. As we were doing some work associated with Oshkosh Corporation, we started doing some work and saw all of these streets that have never been constructed, and they really should be vacated. There's a very small portion of, I believe it's the, excuse me, a portion of that Rainbow Drive that will go to private properties, but everything else is going to the city and essentially will become a part of Rainbow Memorial Park.
Thank you.
So those are all, those streets don't exist, those are grass areas that you're very accustomed to seeing when you're over at Rainbow Memorial Park.
So that won't impact our master plan then for Rainbow Park? I know there was some talk that we might have to get some back, but does it make sense to give them up now, and five years from now, we need it back?
No, this is giving it back to us because technically, if we wanted to put a building in there, for example, we couldn't do it because of public right-of-way. Once it gets vacated, it'll all be parkland, so it'll actually clean it up. And we were surprised, even up until Friday, we found another one that hadn't been, these were platted in the nineteen twenties, and so they're just, it's just one of those things we saw, and we said, well, it's time to get cleaned up. We were doing the first two, originally this was supposed to be a very modest vacation for the first two items. We saw all these, and we're like, let's just clean them up and get them to council while we can. So when we do some master planning and actually do some construction over there at Rainbow, we won't have these plats in the way of construction.
Okay.
Just one quick historical comment. At a certain point, a lot of this, and I don't even know the boundaries, was part of the paying lumber company. I don't know where it starts and stops, but it was there at one time. If council has no further questions, would you please take the roll?
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution eighteen dash three seven four, support to League of Wisconsin Municipalities' efforts to reform commercial property tax in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Pack.
Actually, Mr. Muggerhour, I'll defer this time. We good, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you. I can't say that I support spending any public tax dollars on a political campaign to lobby our representatives. You know, look at, hell, even our municipality, the municipality book we all get, and sixty-five of our ninety-nine Assembly Representatives, eighteen of the thirty-three Senate Representatives, our governor just recently publicly announced his support for a dark stores bill. There is a support. Unless they plan on putting a billboard in front of Speaker Voss's house to change his mind to bring it to the floor, I don't know that a marketing campaign is going to do much good. We have better uses for ten thousand dollars than sending it to Madison to spend on an ad campaign. We've got parks that can use more benches, we've got busing for the Oshkosh area school district that could use a few extra dollars from the city side, so I cannot support spending ten thousand dollars on this.
Councilman Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Muggerhour's point is well taken. The unfortunate thing is, is that due to this legislating from the bench that happened down in Madison related to the dark stores and Walgreens property strategy, these large box stores have taken advantage of a loophole that is not available to the residents of this community, that loophole is not available to the local mom-and-pop business in this community, our local hardware stores, our local restaurants. All of these businesses are affected by the lack of courage at the leadership level in Madison. Mr. Muggerhour is right. The blame lays in one place, Robin Voss. Mr. Muggerhour is correct. A majority, let me repeat, a majority of Assembly members, of Senate members, and even the governor have said this issue needs to be addressed. Leadership, excuse me, leadership of the Assembly and Senate in Madison is totally lacking. These stores, like I say, take advantage of a loophole that is not available to our small businesses, that is not available to our residents. We need to do something about it. I agree, spending ten thousand dollars to engage in political advocacy is something new that we've done. Ten thousand dollars of taxpayer money. And we received a letter from an organization urging us to not spend taxpayer dollars to engage in this lobbying campaign. The organization that sent that letter to us, the City of Oshkosh is a member of that We use taxpayer dollars to belong to that organization. That organization actively lobbies against the City of Oshkosh. It actively lobbies against, by support, by telling, by supporting this dark store loophole. They lobby against the small businesses in this community that are members of that organization. They lobby against the residents of this community, that if this loophole is not fixed, the small businesses and manufacturers in this community that are part of this community that don't simply come here, locate, hire some people in this community, we want their jobs, but if you are going to be a part of this community, then it is up to you to pay your fair share. The citizens of Oshkosh and the small businesses and manufacturers in Oshkosh have the potential to see their taxes increase five percent if this loophole is not closed. Again, I have a very difficult time spending this ten thousand dollars, but if this ten thousand dollars closes that loophole and returns the money and shifts the tax burden back where it belongs on the box stores, those that come here and take advantage of this loophole, again, I'm repeating myself, but our local restaurants can't take advantage of this. Pizza Hut, if they wanted to, they could take advantage of this loophole, but Red's Pizza, West End Pizza, Ratchet Deb's, Zaroni's, none of them can take advantage of this. McDonald's can take advantage of this. Janson's, Jeffson Rugby, all of the small businesses in this community cannot take advantage of it. I would hope that Mr. Muggerhour can see to it and support this as well, but we need to get this loophole fixed. And any organization that we are a member of that actively lobbies against us, I question our membership in that organization. Thank you.
Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roloff, you and I have had several discussions on this issue. You've been in contact with the League of Municipalities. Can you just kind of outline what they're kind of looking at and what other communities might be engaged in helping out for this cause? Because there are, I don't know how many hundreds of municipalities belong to the League of Municipalities, and I know also the Wisconsin Counties Association is working tirelessly to get this loophole corrected. So if you could just give us a little background or some of the dialogue you've had with the League of Municipalities?
Sure. The League had sent out a letter a few weeks ago that began this process, June twenty-second was the date, and what they were looking for, and the number you actually cited earlier was correct, they were looking for an average of twelve hundred dollars as a minimum contribution from every municipality in the state. The League is trying to raise three hundred thousand, hoping similarly that the Counties Association would raise a similar amount, and the idea is that many counties are going to plan to put advisory referenda on the ballot. The logic behind that is, is because if it can't get solved at the legislature with seventy percent support from the legislature, that they need to hear the voice of the people. And this is about a public education campaign to let the communities, to let people in the community understand this larger issue. If we were to spend ten thousand dollars ourselves, the money wouldn't go very far, but if we put it into a pool, the idea is that they can use a variety of methods to educate. Within the League's three hundred thousand fundraising effort, they're hoping to get about a hundred thousand dollars from the top ten communities in the state, and we're one of the top of the ten largest communities. So they're looking for somewhat of a leadership pledge from us because they can use that as an example with others. And why the ten thousand? I straight-up asked Mr. DeShane, what are you looking for from us? I know it says a minimum, but what are you looking for from us? For communities your size, Mark, we're looking for ten thousand dollars because that'll show real leadership and encourage other communities, some of which may not even have, say, a Walgreens in their community, that they need to step up because they recognize the cumulative effect that this could have on businesses and residents. And similarly, based on the mayor's suggestion, they're also reaching out to the school boards because all these taxes impact, it's not just the city, it's the schools, it's the counties, and so they're hoping to raise about six hundred thousand dollars or more. Of the three hundred thousand dollars that the League is being asked, they're taking seventy-five thousand dollars out of the League reserves. Their, Mr. DeShane with the League and myself, we're both on the Board of Directors of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Company, and we're committing seventy-five thousand dollars as well because when we get sued over these issues, the League Insurance Company is paying for our legal expenses. They recognize that we're beating our heads against the wall unless we get some real reform. So League Insurance and the League itself will get us about halfway there, but they're really hoping that with a group of municipalities contributing, that they can make some real headway to do statewide education.
Mr. Pack mentioned, councilmember Pack mentioned a five percent shift. Roughly what kind of dollars are we talking about?
This was-
Specifically, because I think, you know, people think five percent, well, that's not a big deal, but the actual dollar, what amounts are we talking about?
Representative Rob Brooks out of the Saukville area, a Republican, this is a bipartisan support issue. Representative Brooks had asked us for some information so we could standardize it statewide. So this is the information we sent Representative Brooks last year. And if we continue down this path, Oshkosh could lose up to one hundred eighty-four million dollars in value. And when councilmember Pack referred to five percent, that's five percent of our value. And if that shifts, our levy won't go down, our levy, you have to look at our property taxes as a pie that gets sliced up. That shift will take place internally with all the other taxpayers. So the small businesses and residential properties will see the shift. Quite honestly, I think some manufacturing will as well, but the shift will occur away from the big-box retailers to these smaller businesses. And, you know, does this make any difference in the city's finances? Ms. Larson will tell you, no, we're kept by levy limits, we're not going to get any more or any less, it's just that who's going to be paying this? And that's a policy issue for the council to decide if they feel this is a fair thing. And council adopted resolution sixteen dash four eighty-one back on October eleventh, twenty sixteen. So we've been working on this for well over, we were looking at it before that, we've been working on this for well over two years, and we've been working on it longer from a legal standpoint because Attorney Lawrenson's been working on this since, as long as she's been city attorney. I mean, this is a longstanding issue, ten years in the making for us, so it's about, it's about how much longer are we going to have this? We're really just trying to reset the clock the way it was ten years ago.
Thank you. And I know there's other communities that are weighing in on this. Also, I know that the Counties possibly look at a referendum themselves to put on the ballot, let the taxpayers have a say on it. Is there any other people going to speak, Mayor? Otherwise, I want to make an amendment to the resolution. But did other people are going to speak? I'll wait, so I'll let them speak first. Thank you.
All right. A couple of things. I've been very involved in this with the League meetings, Urban Alliance meetings, and the biggest losers in this at the end of the day will be the schools, the children. Already, in Marquette, Michigan, up in the U.P., Lowe's sued them, and the money they had to refund forced Marquette, Michigan to close their library. So that's why at our last Urban Alliance meeting, we encouraged, and we had the school people there that, they're going to be the big losers at the end of the day, and the kids are. Everyone of us, I think, up here owns a home, so we're trying to not only protect the small businesses, the manufacturers in the city or the state, the homeowners. We're fighting some huge corporations with huge dollars and large staffs. One of the major contributors to this whole thing is John Menard, and he does not want to see this take effect. So we're, we have box stores who are really kind of, I'll use every kind of, screwing their customers. They're not, they do not care about their customers. They want to shift the cost. And one of the times I went down to testify, I asked Chief Smith to supply me with some information as to the amount of calls that are made to the box stores, active box stores versus inactive or idle, closed, boarded-up box stores. And Chief, would you please share those numbers with us so people understand the impact? We have to pay for all of the police, fires, and other services, and if these tax dollars don't come to us, where do we find them? We look to the homeowner, small businesses, small manufacturers. Chief, you have the floor.
Sure. We went in and updated the numbers, the numbers that were provided were from 2015, 2016, so we updated those to 2016 and 2017, taking a sampling of three of our large box stores here in the city, using Walmart, Fleet Farm, and Target as the stores. And in 2017, we responded to eight hundred and eighty-eight calls for service at those three stores alone, roughly two-point-four-three calls a day to those stores. And in 2016, it was eight hundred and one calls, or two-point-one-nine calls a day to those particular locations. Now, in comparison to the old J.C. Penney's or the old Kmart, J.C. Penney's in 2017, we had two calls, and then at the Kmart, we had eighteen calls for service in 2017, and then one in six in 2016.
So significant amount of expense with the active stores.
Yes.
Any questions to the chief? Thank you. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roloff, how much do we pay the League of Wisconsin Municipalities for our membership?
I believe it's about ten thousand dollars a year.
Ten thousand a year.
And I'm probably plus or minus two thousand dollars, it's probably in that neighborhood.
And then would you say that they provide us more than ten thousand dollars a year in benefit services through that association?
I believe they do, and I hope the council hopes they do, because this is something that they work on education, they're consistently down at the Capitol lobbying for issues. Kurt Witinski, the Assistant Director, basically spends his time in the Capitol just talking to folks. They helped us a great deal on rental inspection.
That's the same gentleman that was there with us all day at rental inspection at the Capitol, right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
Yes, that's-
Thank you. I guess, do we pay a separate amount for the legal expense insurance from that ten thousand, or does that include? Does that include the legal fees that they cover for us at times?
When league insurance, if you're talking about lawsuits, for exam, are you talking about the lawsuits for some of the?
Yes.
That's league insurance. Our, what you asked about were the dues.
The membership, right. But it's two separate things.
We pay liability insurance and the court, any, up to, I believe, fifty thousand dollars per case.
But we save by purchasing in that realm, right? We save because-
Oh, absolutely.
So, similar to what councilmember Pack was referring to, we're paying to be part of, member of this entity which is benefiting us, which goes too bad for us, in contrast to the other organization councilmember Pack was referring to that we're part of that at times does not. So my additional question then is, if all of the municipalities in the state had put in twelve hundred, then we wouldn't be necessarily, I guess, being encouraged to contribute more?
I would say you're right, yeah, but I think they recognize that some, the average size for a Wisconsin municipality, the membership, the median population is fourteen hundred. I suspect that at least half of the members have no such type of stores. The likelihood of the League getting anything from those smaller municipalities is slim to none. I think there, it was kind of a challenge with the twelve hundred dollars being requested- I think there, it was kind of a challenge with the $1,200 being requested, but the expectation that for the larger ones would-
It's a big ask. It's a big ask.
It is a big ask.
I guess my last comment is, I guess, just for illustration purposes, it seems to me that with this shift of that decrease in the large, big box stores assessment being shifted over to the small businesses and the homeowners, I mean, would it be a fair comparison to say that would be like me taking my house and saying, well, there's this foreclosure sitting vacant for five years over here that's assessed at 40% less, and I think you should only, missed those lights there, that we should only be assessed at that value? Is that a similar comparison?
I think that's a good analogy. I think it's a very fair analogy. And that, and you and I don't have that, that-
We don't have that option, right?
Correct.
I'll be, yeah, I'll be supporting this. It's a big ask, but I think that the benefit outweighs the expense.
I don't think any of us want to just give money away, but at risk here are millions and millions of dollars. We've already refunded 304,000 to just two Walgreens stores. Appleton at Lyescombe was at 700,000, so two communities in the Fosse Valley, over a million dollars. That's not going to stop there. So we're not, it's, I guess it's a small amount to pay to protect, protect the citizens, the homeowners, the businesses in Oshkosh. Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I support the league totally. I've been to their conferences numerous times, I've been to their legislative updates, I've been to many of their bobby days, when we go down and talk to legislators. So I totally support the league and what they do for municipalities. I think it's very, very important. They have a lot of seminars for newly elected officers or council members, and they just do a lot of training and things like that. They do certification training. But I do want to be conscious of taxpayer dollars and the things that we do, and I think this is a very important issue. So I'd like to make an amendment to Resolution 18-374 and just change the amount of $10,000 up to $10,000 so that, yes, we will go up to 10,000, but if other communities are 7,500, 8,000, and we don't have to go to 10,000, let's just say, then I think that would be good. We could save a few thousand dollars and put it towards, maybe like Mr. Mugger always said, the park or rec. But I think I would support amendment to the resolution to reform commercial property tax in up to $10,000.
I'll second that.
As a friendly question, and then correcting the body of the-
Yes.
As well, saying anywhere it says by, quote, "by making a $10,000 pledge," that that would be changed to "by making up to a $10,000 pledge."
Correct. So as in the second to the last paragraph, just, instead of reading the whole thing, it just says, "Efforts to conduct public information campaign to reform commercial property tax assessment laws by making up to a $10,000 pledge to the league." And then the very last paragraph, it would say, "pledge and direct staff to provide up to $10,000 in financial support to the league."
My understanding based on that would be depending on what other communities comparable size. Appleton is a great example because-
Oaklare.
Somebody mentioned-
Janesville.
If they go across- If they did eight grand, we would do eight grand. If they did 10 grand, we would match that. But it's kind of, it's almost like a, like a challenge pledge.
We're making a statement to you that we support this, we'll go up to 10,000, but what are you putting? What's your skin in the game? And how important is it to you as is important to us? But we'll, we'll match up to $10,000.
I can certainly share that with Mr. DeShane. I think that might actually be even more effective because it kind of puts the oomph behind everybody else to put up.
Get on board and pony.
Again, would keep us in a leadership position there.
Yes.
We are the first to support this, we're the first ones on board. Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
And I would report back to council whatever we ultimately cut the check for. That means we probably wouldn't cut the check for a while until we know what other people are doing, but I think that's appropriate.
Well, they wouldn't start the campaign probably until they know what kind of money they have to hire whoever they're going to hire to put it together. So we need to vote on the amendment for extra first.
No, just discussion on the amendment.
Yep.
I support the gentleman's amendment. The thing that we have to remember is, is that, this is, you know, on a side note, this is where we really need campaign finance reform, where legislators cannot be bought and paid for. Yes, I'm using the term "bought and paid for." They'll make the argument, no, I'm just listening to my constituents. The unfortunate thing is, in this situation, constituents are not being listened to, checkbooks are being listened to. And those that write the big checks, they're the ones that are getting the results. So I do support the amendment, I do support the resolution. And one thing I would like to say to the citizens of Oshkosh, if you don't agree with this, if you think that we shouldn't be spending this money, then what I would, in fact, I urge all citizens of Oshkosh to contact Robin Voss in Madison and tell him to be a leader and address this situation. It's not, it's not just us. We're leading the charge, but we also need you as citizens to follow up and let your voices be heard and tell the, quote, "leadership," unquote, in Madison that your voices are not being heard, that you are tired of hearing, oh, we're watching out for the local property taxes, at the same time while they are talking about possibly increasing your property taxes by 5%. We're all in this together. We all have to fight together. Thank you.
Now, we are voting on the amendment, correct?
Yes, we are.
Everyone is clear on the wording for the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Could you please take the roll?
Muggerower?
No.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 5-1.
Now, we vote on, as amended. Need a motion to second.
No, it's already on, too.
Take the roll. I know you're anxious.
Muggerower?
No.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 5-1.
We have two new ordinances. There will be no action taken on either one. Pam, did anyone sign up to speak to either one of these?
No one is registered.
First is Ordinance 18-375, establish street grades slash Pickard Estates Phase 1, North 3,300 block of West 9th Avenue. And next is Ordinance 18-376, authorizing public construction for Pickard Estates Phase 1, North 3,300 block of West 9th Avenue. On to council discussion direction, the city manager and future agenda items. The first is the strategic planning workshop, July 19, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the convention center. Will everyone be able to? I know somebody, someone has a holiday.
Councilmember Crowsey won't be able to make it, he's already indicated. I think everybody else is okay.
Next is the first budget workshop, that'll be July 25 at 5:00 p.m. in this room. And then we have the public works contract workshop, July 31 at 5:00 p.m., also in this room. Next is the second and final time for citizens to make statements to the council. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Now, we have council member announcements and statements. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a reminder that National Night Out, or Neighbor Night Out, is August 7th, the first Tuesday, and I want to thank all of those neighborhood associations who are putting together events for that evening. Some of us will be visiting you. And even if you do not have an organized neighborhood association, please put your porch lights on, just show some solidarity and enjoy your neighbors. Thank you.
Now, it is time for city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items, just a reminder, because of the primary election, our council meeting on, the first meeting in August will actually be moved to Wednesday, August 15. We have a professional services agreement with FGM Architects to do the city hall space needs analysis. That's one of the goals that the council had set for me, so we'll be starting that process. And, you know, quite honestly, I think there might be some value to, at a minimum, talking to the mayor. I think council space needs are equally as important, you're a department unto yourselves, and perhaps we can maybe solicit some input from Mayor Cummings as well as some of the others, if you're available, just talk about kind of your vision on things so that they can incorporate that into their discussion. I think there may be some value with that. We have a professional services agreement we entered into with AECom. We're working on some renovation of the River Rock by the Leach Amphitheater, and that's that area that used to be the WPS site, which was an EPA site. The previous company, STS, was the firm that did it. The people that were STS ultimately got purchased out by AECom, they're still with the firm, they're very familiar with the cleanup issues that are there and all the environmental do's and don'ts that need to get done. We felt it was appropriate to use their services for this project. We also did a purchase announcing, it's the benches and everything you saw in the vision for the William Waters Plaza, those, the tables for checkers and chess and things of that nature. We found these, and they're through the state purchase, so these will be out there on William Waters Plaza. This is all part of the Great Neighborhoods program, so we're doing that. In your agenda packet, this is more for future reference, but the council has approved the CIP to redo the city hall elevator this year. When we are looking, staff was able to get this down to what they believe will be a six-week closure, but the elevator's going to be down for six weeks. So we cannot have council meetings in this room during the time the elevator's down because we won't be able to accommodate somebody for handicapped accessibility. What we did was, Mr. Urban and I prepared this memo as well as the attached options that are out there, not asking for input tonight, but just pointing them out. The school district boardroom is really an option if we were only going to televise council meetings during that time. The school boardroom, you've been in there because we've had our joint meetings, it's smaller than this room itself, you know how tight it is. But it would be very easy and very cheap because all we have to do is turn on the switch because Jake and Scott, they already do that for the school board. But that would, if we weren't going to do any other televised meetings, if all the other boards and commissions were to go dark during that time, that's one option. If you still would like to see the other boards and commissions that are currently televised, continue to be televised, the school district wouldn't be able to accommodate us for that. That would be a little big of an ask. So the senior center is another facility that we've used in the past, or the recently vacated courtrooms over at the safety building. It's not pretty over there, but we could clean it up and make it usable. If you wanted to do televised for everything, that's probably your best bet if you want to keep it live. If you wanted to go tape, you could probably do the senior center. I think the preference among the OCM staff is that they would just like it at one location. If you only want council, you could move over to the school district offices for those two, maybe three meetings tops, and then all the other meetings could be scattered in different buildings because they wouldn't require the televising. I'm just giving you this as food for thought, and I will welcome your feedback. We are not going dark with the elevator until after November 14th, after you approve the budget. We want the budget hearing here. It just makes sense to have the budget hearing here. But after that, we would close it down for, what we're hoping is, no more than six weeks. We typically don't do, Christmas is the fourth Tuesday, we're likely not going to have a council meeting that day, so we could potentially just look at the last meeting in November, the first meeting in December, and then we'd be back here for January. So I, I mean, I can answer questions, but I just wanted to lay it out there for you to give it some thought.
Deputy Mayor Palmary apparently has a question.
So we're looking at later in the year, can you remind me again, what was the, what was the cost on that?
We are bringing the bid for you to award, they just opened the bid.
Oh, okay.
John, I'm going to put John Fitzpatrick on the spot.
We allocated $225.
It was, okay, it says $225 in the budget. I know with the way they got the bids, it's about 20,000 under, so it's about 200, a little over 200,000 to do the elevator. It probably hasn't been done since the mayor was going to high school here.
There was no elevator when I went to high school here. We had to climb four flights of steps. Then we were 16 and 17.
I stand corrected, Mr. Mayor. I probably, they didn't have elevators back in those days, excuse me.
Walking uphill both ways.
So just, I guess, just a follow-up then. If they, if we use the senior center, did you say the senior center would be available to all those other boards and commissions?
The idea is, they have some wiring capabilities that we could tape meetings, we could do taped delay meetings there. It'd be a little more difficult to go live with those. Because of all the wiring that we have for the police department, we have the capability that it's reasonably easy to plug it in and get it working over at the public safety building. But it would, with the senior center, the downside is, you'd have to set up and break down because there are, there are exercise classes in the room where we would have that. But we'd have to set up and break down, so it would take more staff time with the Oshkosh media folks.
Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to suggest the senior center, just because I think we did that when we remodeled chambers here, we moved over to the senior center, and it's an opportunity for some of our citizens to maybe see the senior center for the first time. Safety building's fine, you know, I would have no issue there either, but I just think it's an opportunity to showcase another one of our great facilities that maybe some people that would come to a board meeting or commission meeting or even council meeting would get a chance to see the senior center. I'm sure they would love to host us, so just-
Are you proposing that we're all on exercise equipment while we have the council meeting or something?
Well, you know, I mean, you know, I could walk the four flights of steps, but it'd be hard to carry a wheelchair.
I would, my suggestion is review the pros and cons. We'll put it back on the agenda because we're probably going to bring the bid award to you at next meeting anyway because we just opened it, so, you know, we could start having that discussion. But obviously, when you go dark on meetings, and people are used to flipping on, you know, GovTV and seeing the SAB and the plan commission and that, I think that's your call about where, where and what we do that for. If we go dark on the boards and commissions, then we could show them the senior center, we could do the Willow Room at the senior center, we could do the library. We could move a lot of meetings around. I would suggest that we assign boards and commissions specific rooms so we know plan commission's going to be over in the Willow Room, and Board of Appeals will be at the library, SAB will be here, and rental housing will be there, just so that there's some predictability for that. I wouldn't want to say, you know, kind of spin the dial and where's the board meeting going today? You don't want to do that. You really want the public to know where they can go to the meeting. So give us some thought and let me know, I appreciate it.
Just one question, when would you, what would you like the answer from us, throughout that date?
I would think that before Labor Day, we want to make that decision.
Okay. Mr. Muggerower.
Yeah, just one quick question before I make a comment on that. How many, I forget off the top of my head, so sorry, how many televised boards and commission meetings are there per month? I know plan, I know several of them off the top of my head, but I don't know all of them. But there's probably got to be six.
SAB plan?
SAB plan? It's not half, it's less than half. It's a knock.
First time for everything.
We'll see how John does on switching the camera.
Yeah. Sustainability, RDA, two plan commission, traffic, two council, and parks.
So seven.
Seven here, and then also county board and school board. Add to that list, so.
Thank you. So I guess my comments on that would be, and maybe, maybe he wants to stick around and answer one more question. Sorry, I'll call you back. Take up and tear down, timing to go over to the senior center to take care of that task seven times or more a month. I mean, I know it's only six weeks roughly, so we're talking 10 to 11 meetings overall, but tear down and put up.
Yeah, you're looking at, I would say, you know, the five, 10 minutes it takes to get over there, plus 90 minutes for setup, roughly 45 minutes for tear down, and then drive back here and take care of posting on the web and whatnot, so.
Thank you. I got to say, I'd probably just prefer, just for ease of city staff, just doing the safety building since it's right here, just for keeping costs and time, time low.
Mr. Peck. Mr. Peck.
I'd suggest going with the safety building just simply because of consistency, that, you know, it will be the, you know, SAB meets back in, you know, our plan commission meets in that room, SAB meets in that room, Parks Board meets in that room. So--
Transit.
Let's just kind of, let's set everything up so everybody stays, even though we're, stays the same place but in a different location, so to speak. So, I would urge, I would say do the safety building.
Counselperson Allison Osby.
Thank you. I concur. And also to, in the list that was just rattled off, I'm not sure if committee on aging was included because that is now televised as well. So, we have that back there.
Yep, very good. Yeah, so then number eight.
Are we giving you a direction right now? Is that what--
I'm hearing you pretty, pretty clear. So, thank you.
Is there an agreement that the safety building is where we want to go?
Appreciate the feedback.
Okay.
And lastly, oh, we have the Oshkosh Corporation timeline up there. So, the big thing, you know, we, we did talk earlier about the vacation part. We've kind of settled on the road now that we know where we're trying. What we're trying to do is avoid Army Corps slowing down the project. And so, our engineering staff has been extremely creative and diligent to identify a road that will not require Army Corps. Why is it important to avoid Army Corps? It's not so much that we don't mind the Army Corps looking at things. It would take a year for them to, at a minimum of a year. And so, anytime we can look for a way to do that. There's also a drainage outfall that we have to do because we have to take care of some drainage issues out there, and Army Corps would again require a year-long review. It's not that they wouldn't approve it. It just takes a year to get these things done. And so, we're going to be making some decisions that are really going to be based on, on a timeframe. But the road itself that, that you're starting the vacation process for, that's roads we dedicated, and now we're undedicating them because we've, we've moved it around to accommodate, avoiding the Army Corps regulation. So, that was really the big thing I wanted to talk about tonight. As you can see, that they've started to move some dirt, and it sounds like foundations are going to be poured within the next couple weeks. That's all I have.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Just a quick follow-up on that then. In the, in the memo regarding the updates on this, so the two outlets that the city may swap, are those in conjunction or proximity to those vacated areas that we were looking at earlier?
Yes. One of them would actually contain most of that area that was going to be vacated. It'd be easier to explain it to you on a map that we just got in the last day or two from the survey showing where those outlots are, but they're basically to the south of the right-of-way that's being planted right now. And the vacation will become part of the outlot on the west side of that vacation. We're kind of swapping remnants is what we're doing. So, it's the same location. It's just that it might get tweaked a few feet here, a few feet there. It bends north about an extra 50 feet.
So, then when that comes to council, that will have like size--
We can--
Maps and lots of detail on that?
Up to four pages on that map.
All right. Great. Wonderful. Can't wait.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Mayor, were you going to make a statement about the parks concert?
Go for it.
Go ahead.
You're on the Parks Board.
Yeah, and I'll bring it up. Hang on a second here.
Erased it.
Parks Director Maurer wanted me to read, read off the concert series for the, at the Leech for the Tuesday night for the Parks instance. As the mayor said, I'm on the Parks Board. So, we'd like to invite all our citizens down to the Leech Amphitheater every Tuesday for the next five weeks after tonight, sponsored by VERVE, the credit union. We'll have free concert series starting at 5:30. There'll be some family entertainment available for families at the Leech. And starting at 6:30 to 8:30 are the bands. Tonight is Star 69. The others are on the, on the city's website. So, from 6:00 to 6:30 is family fun, bubble night, VERVE beach ball night, and lollipop face painting. They're also going to do food trucks, including Inferno Subs, Hong Kong, and Asian Food, Los Amigos Family Restaurant, Katana, and Hot Dog Charlie's. So, the Parks Board would like to see everybody go out to the Leech on Tuesday nights for free concerts. And there's also other opportunities at the Leech for movie nights on Friday, I think it is, and some other opportunities. So, check the city website for all the updates and things that are happening at the Leech, sponsored by the Parks, and some of our other fine sponsors throughout the city. Thank you, Mayor.
And you did say all these events are free.
These are free events, correct.
Do you think most of the people attending will know what Star 69 still means, or if it even works?
No idea what they're playing now, so if they're listening now, they better rush down there because it started. So, I think they're an 80s group. I'm not sure.
18 or 19.
No idea.
Right. Now, Deputy Mayor Palmary would like to make a motion to go into a closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the following, the adjournment of this meeting that the council convened into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851(c) of the Wisconsin State statutes to discuss mid-year review of the city manager and employee over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility.
Second.
Could you please take the roll?
Muglerower?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, 6.
Have another look for a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Second, I'm figuring, may I signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Adjourned.